This meeting is being recorded. Roll call.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. Lemay?
Here.
Mr. Booton?
Here.
Mr. Tatsias?
Here.
Mr. Giggie?
Here.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola? Mr. Morin?
Yeah. At this time, before we start the meeting, I'd like to welcome our new superintendent, Mr. Joe Mastacola. We welcome you and we hope that we'll be working well with you in the future. And you've got your feet wet the last couple of weeks here, so...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Welcome, Joe.
Thanks, everyone.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Mr. Booton, any public appearance tonight?
None, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. There is no student rep. Approval of the minutes, July 6th, 2007. Yeah, June, that's right, that's what I said, right?
Motion to approve, second.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola? Mr. Morin?
Yes. Approval of the minutes, June 15th, 2017. Mr. Booton? Mr. O'Hair?
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola? Mr. Morin?
Yes. Approval of the minutes, June 15th, 2017, executive session. Mr. Tatsias? Seconded by Mr. Lemay.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias? Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola? Mr. Morin?
Yes. Approval of the minutes for July 17th, 2007. July 17th, 2017, executive session. Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
You approved it then?
I did.
Missed them, yeah.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias? Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola? Mr. Morin?
Yes. Board of the treasurer, approval of the warrants.
Move to waive the reading, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Seconded by Mr. Giggie.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Bootons?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Yes. Ode to approve the expenditures for the sum of $10,766,322.16. Mr. Giggie? Tatsias?
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hair?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Morin?
Board of the general counsel? No. I'll now turn the meeting over to the superintendent-director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have a few items on the agenda. First, I wanted to introduce two new administrators to our district that were hired over this past summer, six weeks or so. One, the Director of Technology Enrollment and Information. Her name is Ms. Lisa Martinez. She actually starts on Monday, so she'll be here for your review at our next regular scheduled meeting. I also want to introduce our new Dean of Students, Ron Versalone. Ron comes to Great Elol with over 20 years of experience in education. He started his career as an English instructor. His first administrative position was the Director of Community Relations and Admissions for four years, then held a position of Associate Principal for six years prior to joining Great Elol. Ron is currently working on a Master's in Educational Leadership at Cambridge College with a targeted completion date of May 2018. I've been here, you know, a few weeks now, and I've seen Ron in action. Already, he's made a positive contribution to our school district. Ron, would you say a few words?
Hi. Mr. Morin, good to see you again. Good to see you. No, I'm very excited to be here at Great Elol. We met on the final day of summer school, Mr. Morin, and you cranked down your window and introduced yourself and said, "Just give us your best," and that's my intention, to give my best to the students and to the admin team here at the high school. So I'm looking forward to students arriving back on Wednesday. I'm looking forward to staff arriving back on Monday, too, but really looking forward to students being here on Wednesday. So I'm very happy to be here. Thank you for having me.
Good luck.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is an out-of-state travel request seeking approval for Christine Messina. Messina to attend a 2017 Council on Education annual meeting, November 8th to 10th, in Las Vegas. This is a mandatory requirement for institutions. They're preparing for reaccreditation. There's a memo in the packet that explains it further.
Open to discussion?
Sure. Mr. Mastacola, I have a couple of questions about this. It looks like this is something that is mandatory. I know that we've sent our director of night programs and LPN there over the past few years to places like Atlanta and Chicago, I believe, and maybe even Florida. I'm curious why we may have to send her again, considering this is a reaccreditation and it is between two and six years. Is this something that's a mandate at this current time? Or could this be satisfied from what we did last year? Is there someplace closer that she may be able to go?
I'm not sure about the closeness in the site, but I do know that we were told that the mandatory requirement for our institution seeking the reaccreditation. So I understand that this is a mandatory component this year also.
Okay. Is there some...I mean, it looks like it's a few months away. Is it possible to table this to the school committee and let Ms. Messina explain to us during our next meeting what this accreditation, you know, what the steps are to follow? Because it seems like she does go away annually, and I think it's probably best that the school committee knows as much information about this reaccreditation policy as best as all of us can.
Under reaffirmation of accreditation, doesn't it outline what needs to be done on number, paragraph three? Reaffirmation of accreditation must occur from two to six years after initial accreditation or any subsequent reaffirmation decision. The time interval for reaffirmation is determined by the commission. And then in the next paragraph, it says institutions undergoing the reaffirmation of accreditation must send the chief administrator officer of other full-time employee or other full-time employee at the main campus of the institution to a commission-sponsored self-study workshop within six to 18 months prior to hosting the reaffirmation. So it might be here, but it would be nice to have somebody, her, to come in and explain it to us.
I think that would be nice. I would like to know exactly what it's all about. I mean, that's a big part of what we do here at Great Elol Tech as far as, you know, the LPN program and the co-op, I'm sorry, and the occupation educational program. So if maybe Ms. Messina could come to our next meeting and share exactly, you know, what goes on there and how often our reaccreditation comes up and why it comes up, I think it probably would be beneficial to all of us to have that understanding.
Mr. Booton?
I think Mr. Bahu just mentioned, I was curious about the dates we got accredited and when the reaffirmation is happening. So if we can get those dates so we know where we are in the queue. This is every two to six years, so I'd appreciate those dates also.
Ms. Lemay?
I would just ask, maybe the superintendent could check with Christine relative to the dates in question. I noticed that November 8th through the 10th, which is right around Veterans Day as far as getting a flight. So I don't know. I'm hopeful a month delay will not interfere with any of that. Just had that concern, if you could check. I don't have a problem with her approaching the board next month. Will the committee also?
If I may, is she going to have enough time, if we wait till the next meeting, to make her reservations and whatever, you know, for her classes?
That would be my concern.
If...I mean, I don't think this is unusual. What she's trying, as a matter of fact, a lot of things aren't usual. We sent 36, 90 people down south in the past couple of years for one of the programs that was taking place here. I think she's just trying to get her accreditation up to snuff.
Sure.
Go ahead. I would just say that I think that, you know, I'd add to all of your comments, but I think, you know, who decides the location, I don't know. We've sent Ms. Messina on some of these in the past, and it always seems like it's on the other side of the country. And I think, I don't know why this wasn't brought up in the spring. I think it's kind of a last-minute ditch. I mean, I...well, anyhow. And, you know, if need be, she may have to do a late registration, but...
Right. And realistically, the seminar cost is unknown at this time, which means that, you know, they really haven't, you know, set everything up. Everything's not etched in stone as far as the seminar goes as well. And, you know, let's be real here. If we approve her on roughly September 16th, and she plans on flying on November 8 or November 6 or November 7, I believe that six weeks is definitely enough notice to book a flight, to book a room in Las Vegas. I know there's plenty of them. I've been there a number of times. And let's all, you know, just maybe try to find out as much information about this as we can, if that's okay with the committee.
Superintendent, yeah?
This is for our accreditation, not hers?
No.
No.
This is for the...this is in your...
The program.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure. It's for the accreditation of the school.
Yes.
Okay.
But her being in charge of that area, she's required to go. Okay. Next to you.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Number three on the agenda, summer work project update. I've included a summary list from Mark Byrne of the projects that happened over the past six to eight weeks here for your review. Obviously, there's continuous work being done as getting ready for Monday and having our building look spick and span and ready to go. Item number four, ninth...
Excuse me, can we just back up? I don't know if everybody reviewed. And back in the spring, in our budget request, there was a long to-do list of what we were supposed to get done over the summer. And I believe that that's only a part of it. Is that correct?
That's correct. This is only a part of the...
There's quite a few things on that list that didn't manage to get done. And I'm hoping are going to be fulfilled in the future.
It's on the agenda, that's what I've been told, yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Yeah, just on that very matter. I've been through, this summer, I've been through some of the floors, and some of them are spotless right now. However, and I shouldn't say however, I imagine you can't do everything at the same time. One area was a little, it looked a little discolored, but I would imagine it's only because of the number of people you had working. But that was done in the manufacturing area. Is that all done, or has that been done yet?
I'm not sure. I really don't know.
So that could be, that could be the overflow there.
I can find that out.
Yeah, as I was entering the building tonight, I was going around a lot to see some storage sheds. And also, when I came in, I walked through the Edison and noticed into the culinary kitchen that there was a lot of new smallwares, pots and pans. And also took a walk through the cosmetology area, who I was, had a walk-through with the superintendent a week ago, and I'm like, "This ain't going to happen," but it's done. It's really, it really looks great, too. It really looks great. And so I'd say a great job to the, you know, to the boyo. He's the director of the...no, he's not the director, but he's in charge of the custodians at night and the grounds and maintenance and everything for doing such a great job to get the school pumped up and looking good.
Let me just jump in. We've got to give a little credit to Mark Burns also, because he's in charge of all those people that are doing the work.
I understand that, but he doesn't do the actual work.
Okay, good, thank you.
Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Lemay?
I would just preface my remarks that my former employer of 34 years was able to supply from the community relief program, six men each day, to do some good work up here during the summer. It saved us substantial money. I know Mark Byrne put them to good use, and they did a great job. And I just thought maybe we could, either through the superintendent or you, send the Sheriff Catush a letter of thanks.
Well taken.
That's what they do year-round, and we should take advantage of that if we have any other projects that need to be done.
Good suggestion.
These are...
Yeah, good. Anybody else?
These are gentlemen that are on their way out the door, so to speak, with only a few months left, so they're like trustees, would be the term you'd probably be familiar with, but they're...
Yes, I am, yes.
They're always under supervision, and it's good to get things done, because we do a lot of projects.
They've been coming out here for several years now.
I understand.
No, I...that was the point to me. I understand that, and I was kind of getting a smirk from my colleague.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Item number four, ninth grade exploratory and shop selection report. As previously requested by Mr. Booton, a report regarding the ninth grade exploratory and shop selection is included in the packet. Item urgent, sorry.
Could I just ask a question or maybe some follow-up on it? This was a great report to show that 90% of our kids got their first choice. Very happy with that. But one of the things that I was asking of the last superintendent, and if, Mr. Mastacola, if you could take this and bring this back to the next meeting, I'd like to know who applied for, how many kids applied for cosmetology? How many didn't get in? You know, write down the list. You know, that didn't, that may have gone into CAD, electrical, plumbing, culinary, any of those. So if we could get a breakdown of, you know, what the top choices are for the kids and then break down from that, how many applied, how many didn't get in? And then that would be helpful. Other than that, I appreciate the report. Thank you.
And is that the, just to clarify, Mr. Booton, what you're asking, is that simply their first shop choice? And then if they didn't get in?
First, second, and third. Like, you know, they put down a first and a second and a third. So I'd like to see, you know, what percentage of the kids got into those? Or what their first, second, and third, so first choice, second choice, third choice? They'll give us an overall number. Combined third choices may really put one shop above the rest, so if we could get a breakdown with those two, thank you.
Ms. Espinola?
If I may, I don't want to put any words into your mouth, but I know you've brought a few things up about this in the past over the last couple of years. It's important to know whether we need to expand on some of our shops. And maybe some of the shops that we have might be leading towards extinction. And maybe we could start doing, I think you had mentioned, a hygienist shop or something like that, so...
Colleague, Mr. Bahu was very high on that. I'm considering welding or homeland security.
But it's something that, that's what, I believe it's very important, your quest of the superintendent. And I think that's important for us to know. Now that the dust hopefully has settled with, in the last four years...
No pun intended. Oh, boy.
Between the construction and a new superintendent and everything, now we can get on to doing the business of the kids. And so that's very important. I just wanted to expand on that.
Thank you.
Mr. Nick?
And Ms. O'Hair?
From what I understand, you know, just from the end of the school year, that some of those areas are overflowing, you know, as they always have. What do you call it? Not hairdressing, but cosmetology being one of those. It seems to be a demanding place, that we just don't have the seats for it. But having said that, that's good, because we're getting more kids trying to get into the school. And maybe sometime, maybe they're not all going to be there in a month or so, but right now, those, many of those programs are overflowing.
I think the point here, Mr. O'Hair, was what shops are not getting...
Oh, yeah. Well, I just, I just readdressed it the opposite way, just saying, you know, which ones, they're overflowing. Yes, I understand. Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on.
Item number five, a competitive grant report as previously requested by Mr. Booton. A report regarding competitive grants for the 2016, 2017 is included in the package.
Mr. Booton?
Mr. Mastacola is interviewing superintendents. They brought up other grants that were out there. I know you mentioned it, the other two candidates we interviewed. I would hold, it seems there aren't that many here. Through my years, two superintendent searches, or three, actually. Everybody's talking about other grants out there. I'm hoping that we can increase this. I know the $465,000 Mass Skills Grant that we got. I know Roger Bourgeois had a big part in that. He pretty much took that one and ran with it two years in a row and hoped to get it again this year. But I'm assuming there's some others out there that we may be able to get to help our students. You know, additional reading, additional math, whatever you think is possible. I don't want you to just go after a grant and it's going to, you know, saddle our staff with extra, because sometimes that's the case. You get $2,000, and it's way beyond that, that you have to do all this reporting. But I would lean on you and your comments there in the interview that there could be others out there we should be going for. So, thank you.
Item number six, cooperative hockey team report as previously requested by Mr. Booton. A report regarding the cooperative team hockey program is included in the package. It's a summary report of where we're at. I think we have a little bit more work to do in regards to that. Athletic Director White's here if you need to answer any questions regarding that report.
Why don't we ask Mr. White to step forward and give us an update on that? Mr. Booton?
I just wanted to mention, in the time that I made this request, I did forward to Mr. Mastacola the contact information for Innovation Academy. And something I don't know if I mentioned or not when I was looking to do this, I'm not looking for us to be the sponsor, because that's a significant cost to the school. I'm hoping we can find someone else that we can go play with. So I don't want to overburden us, but hoping we can find another school. I don't know if you had any update?
Yeah. So I was in contact with the athletic director of Nishoba Tech. Geographically, it's a great fit for us. They play right over at the Chelmsford Forum. They practice over there. It's a good, it would be a great setup for us geographically, for our students, and it would work out. Also, fellow vocational school, so they understand some of the other demands on the kids as far as things like co-op sometimes and Skills USA and the different, you know, different challenges some of our kids face when it comes to participating in athletics. So I spoke with them. They were receptive. Only slight issue with them is their numbers are right around the cutoff for where typically you see a co-op accepted. They typically fill 20 to 23 kids, which is right there on the cusp of what they'll typically say. So with that, I put in a call to the MIAA, spoke to the associate director there. He basically, you know, he heard what I had to say. He was receptive, and he said, you know, "Your next thing, you should contact your district rep, because all these decisions are going to be made at the district level, and then the MIAA will then, you know, will follow what the district rep, you know, suggests, as we should proceed." So I spoke to one of our district reps this week, who's also the athletic director at Whittier, who's in our league, so that's a good thing for us as well. And he was, he was open to hearing what I had to say. So I'm hopeful that once I formally put together the application, which those typically don't come due for winter sports till September, I'll put it in before then, but just mid-September is when they'll start reviewing them. But they'll have it well in advance of that. I'm hopeful that they'll approve it. It's not a guarantee, but it, you know, it's a strong possibility, because we typically run anywhere from, we've been as low as four kids, three, four kids, we've been as high as seven or eight. So, you know, the middle, average is about five. That's about typically how many kids we were sending to the previous co-op that we were in for hockey. About five kids, average. So hopefully, they'd be receptive to, you know, allowing our five to seven kids to continue to play hockey. That's really the bottom line. That's what we're looking for, more than anything else, just an opportunity somewhere to play hockey. So Nishoba right now, and Nishoba Tech seems to be the area that we're concentrating on. Hopefully, that'll work out. If it doesn't, there are other options, probably not as convenient, but there may be another option within our league. But we'd have to wait and see. Let's start with Nishoba and see where that goes, and then we'll go from there.
Through you.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Booton.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. How about, what about the Innovation Academy? Would they be willing to host?
I don't know. You know, I don't really, I haven't had any contact with them directly in terms of that. It was an idea that was floated, you know, what about them? Because I think that was more a speculative thing, I think, because they have added programs over the year, and their athletic program has started to grow. I don't know if they're at the point now where they're ready to host, be the host of a, you know, of a hockey program that, I mean, to be quite frank, financially, it's probably the biggest investment you'll make in any athletic program. Just the ice fees alone can run upwards of $40,000 in a season. So I don't know if they're at that point yet. I think, you know, to us join up with Nishoba, I think that's probably, for me personally, seems like I feel pretty good about the feedback I'm getting and probably would be the ideal situation for us right now. It's, you know, they already have a program. And, you know, to jump in with them would probably be the path of least resistance at this point. So hopefully, that's what comes to fruition.
Mr. Superintendent, I was contacted by somebody that's on the board of directors for the Innovation Academy that they were interested in partnering with us. I'm not sure if it says they'd be the host or not, or they wanted us to be the host. So if this doesn't fall, I'd hope you'd follow up with them. I already emailed you the information for their athletic director, and you could pass it along if you see fit.
It was anticipated that was going to be our second option after the Neshoba piece.
I mean, million dollar question, if they're willing to host or not host.
Espinola, you had a question?
Thank you.
Yeah. I was under the impression that this was for the following year, not this coming year. Sounds like this is for this coming year.
Correct. Because Drakeet voted to dissolve, well, not voted, but chose to dissolve the, the co-op agreement that we had effective immediately. You can grandfather in any returning players, but then that would eliminate any new players from having the opportunity to play. So, if we say, okay, well, fine, we'll go into a grandfathered agreement with you, that means any ninth grader, 10th grader that wasn't on the team last year, either because they weren't here at the school, or they just weren't able to try out, or whatever the case was, like, wouldn't, wouldn't be allowed to play.
So, the kids that played for Great Ello last year?
Can play.
Can play with who?
Drakeet, if we choose to accept a grandfathered agreement, which we haven't done yet, we have until September, you know, call it September 15th, to decide whether or not we're going to do that. I was hoping to have, you know, an answer, which we should, for the Neshoba situation before we decide to do that.
All right. This is troubling for me right now, because most of the kids that are playing hockey come from Drakeet.
Correct.
If not all of them. I'm not really sure.
About 60%.
Yeah. There's seven or eight kids, right?
We had seven last year.
And five of them come from Drakeet. And I'm told that the captain is from Drakeet.
Yes, yes, the potential captain, yeah.
So, the captain of the hockey team coming this year doesn't know if he's going to be playing on a team yet?
Correct. And that's not really, I don't know. Not, but not by our choice.
You're telling me you haven't decided to jump or let them grandfather, like?
Because if we commit to that, then we're committed to that. So, that means any kid that wants to join can't. So, we still have a few weeks to decide, but that's always the fallback.
So, so, we as a body have a few weeks to decide. What are we doing for these kids that are sitting there wondering where they're going to play? What, what's in their heads right now?
Yeah.
So, as far as an administration, I think we're letting them down. I, I, I personally was under the impression that we were going to have one more year, and then we would take all next year to find a place to play.
Yeah, and that option is still 100% on the table.
For us to be sitting here and saying, we will, we'll, we'll decide if someone lets us play with them, to me, is, doesn't seem to be prudent. If, if, you know, we're asking people to let us play with them, and, and, you know, beggars can't be choosy. So, the seven kids, most of them are from Drakeet. I'm, I'm getting my ears full from their families. And I was under the impression that we were going to work this out this year for the following year. I had no idea that we're sitting here waiting, like, 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 we are God's gift to hockey for somebody to say, hey, let's go. Now, you're talking about, there is Neshoba, who are right on the limit, and they may or may not ask us to, to let them play.
Maybe I didn't explain myself clearly. If, if you don't mind, I can kind of, yeah.
Go ahead, yeah. Because like, it doesn't, it doesn't appear to me that I understand what's going on. Because I've been right into this.
Yeah. So, anytime you have a cooperative agreement, obviously, you have to have two schools willing to come together and say, you know, we have, we have a need, and you have people that are willing to participate in the sport that could help us sustain our program. Sustain a viable program, that's the only reason for co-ops. It's not for, to create super teams or do anything like that. So, that's not what we're trying to do. It's to sustain a viable program. So, in the past, Drakeet expressed a need for a cooperative agreement. So, we, we went into this cooperative agreement with them. We were, and we still want to be in this cooperative agreement with them. They don't want us, for whatever reason. So, and again, that's not for me to speculate, but for whatever reason, they chose to dissolve with us, because they didn't dissolve with Tingsborough, because they're staying with Tingsborough. It was us, Tingsborough, and Drakeet. They chose to stand with Drakeet and to eliminate us. So, that was, I mean, stand with Tingsborough and eliminate us. That was their choice, not ours. So, now, we're in a situation where if we accept the grandfather clause, we're saying only kids that participated last year will be able to play hockey this year. That is all. No other student in this building, whether or not they're, like we're saying, the greatest hockey player ever, if they're coming into the school, and if you didn't play last year, guess what? You can't play. You're out of luck. So, what we do is we have a timeline to do, to work with by mid-September to make that decision. So, I think for myself, and I think for, you know, from, I've been in contact with, with the parent of the, the player that you, that you were mentioning quite frequently. The parents are very understanding, very upset about the situation, but also realize it doesn't have a lot to do with our decision-making. I've, I've probably spoken to them in the month of June, once a week, to be honest with you, and then a little bit in July, and now we'll start back up again as this, the deadline approaches. For September, we need to decide whether or not Drake, Neshoba wants us. They want us to be on board. But it's not their choice to say, yes, we, we're a co-op with Great Ello. We have to apply at the district level. We're, we're District A. The state's broken up into like 10 districts. We're in District A. So, we have to put in a formal application, which takes all five minutes to fill out. That's not a really extensive process. But I have to submit the application. District A will then review it. Their chair and their, and their committee, it's about four, four athletic directors and a principal total. They'll review it, they'll say yea or nay, you know, yes or no. Or they'll, or they'll call us in, us and Neshoba, and say, okay, this is what we're thinking. Explain to us why, you know? Can you show, show to us that you absolutely need these five to seven kids from Great Ello to sustain a viable program in Neshoba Tech? That's what they're going to want to see. So, Neshoba's on board. They would love to have us. I've spoken to their ID several times. We'd love to be there. It's a good fit for us, and we, we feel welcome. Because to be honest with you, in the Drakeet situation, we never really felt welcomed, even though our kids played by their rules, so to speak, played their, paid their user fees, did all the things that they were asked to do, for whatever reason, never felt 100% welcome, because they begrudgingly accepted the co-op the first time, due to some outside pressures, I think. And now, the first opportunity that they saw to dissolve it, they took it. And they chose to go on with Tingsborough instead of us. They were given a choice, and they chose Tingsborough over us. I can't change that. So, now, if we say, yes, we're going to grandfather in, unfortunately, we'll be bound to that. So, any kid this year with the opportunity to play isn't going to have it outside of the kids that are returning. So, I would rather take.
How many kids are there?
Right now, we have five returners.
So, how many kids addition to those kids would not fall under the grandfather?
I know at least one, I know at least one, because the younger brother of the, of the, of the student you were referencing is actually an incoming ninth grader. And then, actually, no, two, because then there's a freshman who I spoke, I met with their parents yesterday, actually, because they came in to pick up his ID or something. And they also were, you know, I've been in phone contact with them all summer. So, that's two that I know of. So, I mean, it's not a significant number, but in the grand scheme of things, that's, you know, 30% of the kids we send annually is two. So, that's, you know, that is significant when you're talking about the population we're dealing with.
Can you divide and let the grandfather kids go to Drakeet, and then the new kids go to Neshoba, at least for the first year?
No.
There's no chance for that?
No. So, basically, I guess my thinking was, and I'm sorry if I wasn't clear, I want to exhaust all avenues before I 100% say, fine, we'll grandfather remaining kids, and then continue to work with something. So, that way, a kid doesn't miss a year of, of, a chance to participate. Because if we commit to it, we're committed. And that's it. You know, we're kind of bound to that for the year. So, if we have another three weeks or so, you know, I would have loved to make, had this decision made already, but I'm just going on the timeline from when they review them. They'll start reviewing the winter co-ops in September. That's just, that's the typical timeline. Like, last year, we were approved for a two-year co-op extension with Drakeet last September. The paperwork was filed, everything went in, it was approved, and then about January, it was decided that they were going to dissolve it.
Is there a way you can prioritize that with the district? Or is it on their calendar?
The meeting dates are on their calendar. I can't change that. I have, like I said, I have spoken to, to one of our district reps directly on the phone several times, and he's, you know, he's been, he's been receptive. And I met with, I actually went over and met with the Neshoba athletic director a while back, probably about a month ago at this point. I mean, we've also been in contact via email and phone calls over the last couple of weeks too, just trying to make sure that, you know, the ball is moving in a direction.
What is the likelihood of it being accepted? Is there any precedent out there?
Yeah, I mean, it's really, honestly, it's up to the subcommittee. It's really up to what they feel. Every district is different in, in terms of what they view is an acceptable number, what they view is, is what is a needy, is, you know, a program in need. It, and it varies wildly from, you know, from, from district to district. Some, some districts are very conservative with their co-ops, some are a little more liberal with their co-ops. As far as ones that they grant, it's, I don't really, I can't, I wish I could say definitively yes or no, but honestly, I, I don't know what.
Mr. O'Hare, you had a question?
Yes. You all?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, just, just a few words. In the past, we have had students from Great Ello at Neshoba as basketball players, and there was no problems. But there has been, I mean, the issue here is right in, I think, the main office in Drakeet, allowing, where they're going to allow their students to go, period. You had to convince the superintendent before anything else.
That's not what I'm hearing, so I don't want to.
No, that's what I heard.
I don't want to beat this dead horse.
And that's a while ago, too.
I don't want to beat this dead horse, because I'm, I'm telling you, this has been a headache for me.
Yeah.
For at least eight months. I'm just going to let it go.
Mr. Lemay. Go ahead.
Reading the summary.
Didn't mean that superintendent.
Reading the summary, I was a little concerned about, after you got the information, you, when you reached out to Drakeet, there was no correspondence for at least four to six weeks.
Yeah, there was some lack of communication.
What was the cause of the lack of the correspondence for a month and a half?
Your guess is as good as mine. I don't know. They just, they chose to kind of sit on the information.
So, in that case, is there anything we can do as a board to assist in this endeavor or in any way, or?
I think there's been some.
Is it best left at?
I think there's been some conversation out, you know, above, above just, you know, the, the athletic officers talking. I know there has been some communication, you know, between the prior superintendent, Mr. Bourgeois, and then, and their superintendent over there. And honestly, if I, to speak bluntly, I just, I don't think they want us anymore. Like, and that's kind of, that was kind of the gist of the conversation. They'll grandfather our kids, because they know it's, you know, it's two more years, they'll, they'll have to deal with it, so to speak, and then it'll be gone forever, and then that'll be that. And I just, I'm just, my concern is to tell those two kids this year that I know of, that's, that I know of, that you can't play this year, and maybe next year, you know, we'll, we'll continue to try to work on something. But I'm going to tell, like I said, two is not, not a lot, but in, in this situation, it is a lot. That's, you know, that's a third of the kids. I'm going to tell them, sorry, you're out of luck for this year. Only the five that were here last year can play. And that's it. So, it's kind of, it's a, it's a, it's a tough situation. I wish it was just cut and dry, and I could say, yep, this is the best move for us right now. But I'd rather exhaust all avenues before I say, all right, we'll grandfather. Because that, that option's still on the table for, you know, the last, that can be our last choice. And then those kids can play in Drakeet that were there last year, and then we'll continue to evaluate going into next year.
I just concur with my colleague from Drakeet. He's getting all this.
Feedback.
Feedback, pro or con, as far as, we're still ending up frustrated as to where, where we're going. I didn't know if, as a unified body, if we could assist in any, any way, that's all.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Mr. Booton.
Three questions. Who made the decision in Drakeet? Was it the athletic director or the superintendent? Do you know who makes that decision?
That, I'm not sure. To be honest with you, I got an email correspondence from the, from their athletic director that said, we're going to be dissolving the co-op based on numbers. We then contacted them, and that was when the four to six week gap went.
That's okay. That, that was just, I was just curious if you knew. One of the things, I don't want to be in a situation, so the date for requesting grandfathering, does that, can that come after approval or disapproval of our cooperation with Neshoba?
Yeah, I would.
So, if Neshoba, if we're rejected to not co-op with Neshoba, we could still grandfather our players?
Yes, that's, that's my understanding, and I'll, I'll make sure that's clear before I.
I just want to know if those two dates are the same time, if they're meeting?
Yeah, they would, they would, honestly, they would make that decision at the same meeting. It's, it would be like, as far as, the, the meetings are very small and fast-paced.
If we put all our eggs in Neshoba, and they say no for Neshoba, then do all of our kids not get to play, or are we still entitled to grandfather?
No, we would grandfather the, the remaining kids.
We'd have time to do that?
Correct.
I'd like to move on. Mr. Bahu, question?
No, just the returners.
Thank you.
Mr. Bahu.
Okay, I, I only have one question. And you've indicated that you spoke to a district rep of Division A or Rep A from the MIAA.
Yeah, yeah, District A, correct, yeah.
And this is on their radar, and he likes the idea. You've indicated that you've spoken to the AD of Neshoba. You've met with him personally.
Yeah.
You've done emails, you've done telephone calls. Is there any chance you could have the AD from Neshoba Tech talk to the district people of District A, MIAA?
Oh.
To let them know that they're on board?
Yeah.
So that, you know, this can be one thing, yeah, sure, the MIA, yeah, well, Great Ello really wants this, but we're not really hearing much of a buzz from Neshoba Tech. Let's see if, I mean, I, I understand the proximity, I understand the vocational schools. I'd hate to see any kids not have an opportunity to play any sport. I'd hate to see a kid leave Drakeet when they played for Drakeet a number of years in a row. But this is an avenue that needs to be pursued. And please, if you could kindly call the AD director, if not, go and see him one more time. It would be, I think, time well spent for our students. And try to get them to contact the MIAA reps in the area as well.
Certainly.
I'm going to, I'm going to ask that we move on, and that Mr. White, you know, researches whatever, and you, you alone don't make the decision, is that correct?
No, yeah, no, correct, I don't make.
You have one last thing.
I'm just concerned that we're almost into September, and we don't have an idea on who we're going to play with if we don't play with Drakeet. I'm concerned with that. End of the case.
We're aware of that.
Okay.
I don't, I don't mean to belittle this, but again, if one of those kids goes to, one of a, a Great Ello kid goes to Neshoba, and for some reason, he has to leave, move, or whatever, you don't, you cannot fill that spot at Neshoba with another Great Ello student, is that correct?
No, we could. If we were in a full co-op agreement, we can't. If we're in Drakeet, we can't in a grandfathered agreement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, hopefully, we'll hear something more about this.
Yes, we will.
In our next meeting, from either the superintendent or our athletic director.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll be late.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's the conclusion of the report.
All right.
That was quick.
It was, yeah. Report of the business manager.
I heard somebody say motion to adjourn.
Not yet.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
So, I have four items from the business office. The first one is our Aramac contract ended June 30th, 2015. We have four options, options to renew. We're on our third annual renewal, so we need to vote on that tonight.
Mr. Brill, when I was reading that, and it says our contract ended on the 5th, June 15th?
June 30th of 2015. So, it's considered a one-year contract with four options to renew. So, these are considered amendments. So, yes, we're on our third option.
So, if it ended a year ago?
Mm-hmm. Two years. We're in our third year to renew.
So, does this go out for an RFP?
Yes, in the spring of 2019.
Right.
So, this is our third year, and next year will be our fourth year, and then we'll go to bed.
Thank you. Who's voting to?
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve a new additional contract for one year for Aramac.
Mr. O'Hare.
The wording for the motion is in.
What's that?
There's a specific wording.
On the bottom of number one.
Motion to renew the District Feud Service Management Contract with Aramac Educational Services LLC for the 2017-18 fiscal year, subject to the approval by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Desi.
Second.
What'd you say?
Motion to approve.
He did, he did.
Mr. Chair, can I just speak on the motion for a sec?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think Aramac has done a great jobs, job. Um, I think Aramac has done a great jobs, job. Um, as many of you know, my son graduated the year before. Um, his friends are constantly, you know, speaking about the food here, um, compared to other schools when they're with their friends. So I think they've made some great improvements. I think they've taken the new cafeteria and done a great job at it. They've made some improvements. And, uh, the kids are benefiting from that, and so is the school district. So, thank you.
The second item is student lunch.
We gotta vote on it.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
The second item is the student lunch prices. We've, um, kept the prices at two fifteen for this year. Um, because we, we obtained a, a waiver to, you know how we have a mandatory price increase? We got a waiver from the Department of Ed this year to keep it at two fifteen, being that we have plenty of revenue in it.
And are we being pressed to, uh, increase that?
Yes, we, um, everyone has to increase to a certain rate, but because we have, we're only allowed to have three months of, um, expenses in our revenue account, we've done well, so we don't wanna, um, violate those rules. So they gave us a waiver so that we don't increase the, the, um, lunch price and revenue.
And is, and is also, uh, free and reduced part of that percentage? Okay. Mr. You, you got a question?
Just want to-
If no questions, great work.
Okay.
Thank you for, you know, operating that as well, of all the other things that you do here, and to have three months in our account, really stands tall on how, how well Aramac is doing, and how well Greater Lowell is doing.
Briefly. Um, if we keep the price at two fifteen, does that affect us in the future? If we have less revenue, can we increase it to the amount to meet that need, or does it go up in small percentages?
So we've, um, we've been going up one, five cents per year. The Department of Ed would like to see us go up to the full rate, which is two seventy-three. But because we have the opposite problem, we only, uh, we don't wanna exceed that three-month allowance. Um, right now, they gave us a one-year waiver so that we don't increase our revenue, which, uh, which is good for the families, of course, too. But no, we can definitely increase. We could vote as a, um, you could vote as a board to go up the full sixty-three cent difference in the future. But right now, they waived it. We don't, we were planning on doing the nickel raise, you know, but even that, they waived for us.
This is fantastic. It's good for the families.
Mm-hmm.
Question, Mr. Chairman? We, do they, uh, does Aramac send out, like, surveys to the home? Or do they do any surveys relative to, uh, the nutritiousness and this and that of what they have?
It's actually a Department of Ed regulation we have to meet. We're going to have, um, students participate and do male planning, parents. We have a wellness committee that we have to work with, one teacher, a nurse, a student, a parent. So yes, and they do surveys with the students. They do, um, testing. You know, they'll try new menus and have the kids tested, and base it on, um, they base their menu on the students' choices. So yes, they do.
Thank you.
O'Hair.
I just wanna say, uh, one thing, just in addition to this. I know a couple of years ago, some people were complaining about the food. So a few of us went to the, uh, uh, cafeteria and ate what the students were eating, uh, as, you know, I'd like to do again this year, but, and, uh, the meals are fabulous. I, I, I really haven't seen a, or, or the lunches are fabulous. I haven't really seen a bad meal come out of that cafeteria yet. But I think it's good that, you know, we, not that we wanna go in there and cause a commotion, but just taste what you have to eat in that, uh, that Aramac provides. It's, it's a great experience. Good, good test, too.
Went to go down and get a taco, and, uh, the line was too long. I didn't have enough time.
You should've jumped in the Irish potatoes line.
That's an indication that it was good, right?
That was your nickname.
The next, um, item on my report is projections of the FY sixteen seventeen excess and deficiency in net school spending. We, um, def, we did a good job spending down the budget this past year. We met our E, I mean, our E and D percentage is projected to be four percent, and we met and exceeded the net school spending requirements by two hundred thousand.
I'm sorry, would you repeat?
Sure. So, um, the main thing we wanna do when we spend our money is make sure that we, um, keep our E and D under five percent and meet our net school spending requirements. We, our E and D percentage is at four percent as of June thirtieth, and our net school spending required minimum, we met it by more than two hundred thousand dollars. We did a good, we did a good job meeting all of our D E S E requirements.
To hear, thank you.
Any questions upon that?
Good job.
Okay, and then the audit update. I just wanted to let you know, you have the June thirtieth, two thousand sixteen audit in your, on the audit booklets. And our new audit begins August twenty-third of the, um, of this year.
So this is last year's audit?
Yes, they just, they just finished it.
Okay.
The, um, after the last meeting.
I was looking at the date. I thought they made a mistake.
Yeah, no.
When is the, um, audit meeting that we go over the audit?
So they didn't, they weren't available for the June meeting, and that's when the, um, the audit was completed. So they're gonna do a double report after this October meeting.
Oh, look forward to that.
Yeah. And that's it.
When will that be?
Octo, well, October twenty-third is the audit, but, and, you know, you go through the audit cycle, and it depends on how quickly they get through it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, old business. Any items not on the agenda brought up under this section will be discussed, uh, in our business. Outstanding items for previous meetings. Any questions on those?
I'd like to leave them on. We're gonna get more information on the three that I put out, so.
Uh, new business. Any items not on the agenda brought up under this section will be, uh, for discussion on purpose. This is only, action will be deferred to a future meeting.
Nomination?
Well, nomination of delegate, uh, alternate to the M S Association of School Committees Joint Conference.
I'd like to move, I'd make a motion, Curtis.
Curtis.
Delegate.
Thank you, Mr. Lemay.
Let's take a vote.
Did you second him, Mr. Espinola?
Yes, I did, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Bahu?
Only if you're the alternate.
Okay. That was last year.
All right, so the delegate, Mr. Lemay. So Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Congratulations.
I'm so happy to be relieved of that responsibility, yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yeah.
Haven't been graded yet, yes. Uh, you, but you didn't give me a chance, huh? Yes, I'll be the alternate.
Well, I'd like to nominate Mr. Moran.
Actually, it's a dual nomination for both Mr. Booton and I.
Okay, Mr. Bahu?
Definitely.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Definitely.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. What I wanted to do, uh, to bring up under new business was to, uh, uh, request the superintendent to give us an updated list of the new hires, along with the column step and salary, as you know. Some of us know there's been an issue recently about a teacher's hire. But, uh, uh, back at the June meeting, I had requested the former superintendent for a list, and he did give us a list. But I'm sure there's an add-on list to that list. And, uh, perhaps the executive secretary could put that together for us. Also, uh, I'll be requesting a change of the official school title, the letterhead to change the superintendent's name.
It's in process. We have to wait for this.
Okay.
Oh, I missed that.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we have to wait for graphics.
I know, but sometimes in the past, it used to take months and months.
Second your motion.
It doesn't take long.
It has, it's just a suggestion.
Hasn't been taking months. It's just because we have no students.
No, but I'm saying in the past, when you became the chairman, it took six months before your name appeared on the school letterhead. So that's just a suggestion, and we don't need, we don't need a vote on that.
But you got them. Hopefully we'll see that by September first, Mr. Chairman.
We will.
I'm giving them almost all away.
Uh, committee person motions. Motion by Mr. Booton to request the superintendent research the possibilities of having committee members sign documents digitally. Mr. Bahu seconds it. Do you vote on it now, or discussion? Open for discussion.
I just, um, I do a lot of real estate work, and many of the documents that the buyers and sellers and real estate agents sign nowadays are electronic signature. It's controlled by your email, and your email is protected password by you, so it's considered legal.
Read that anywhere in a country.
You could do it anywhere. I've had, I've been on a ship, believe it or not, on a cruise.
Shocker.
We didn't know that.
So, um-
Yes, that's Booton.
It would, uh, it, it would just help productivity-wise than having to have members come in, take time out of the day for either the executive secretary or anybody, and you could get documents back quicker. Um, it's the twenty-first century, so, thank you.
Will the documents be available for us to view? To sign them?
Yes, yes.
Are those documents protected?
Ask the superintendent to look into that.
So that's, that would be my concern, if I'm just signing whatever, and I don't know what, what's behind it.
No, you would get a copy, you could, you'd read it, and then you could sign it, after you read it.
So, Mr. Booton, is your request to see the warrants? That type of a-
So the warrants is a perfect example. The, um, business manager could send it out, could put our individual signatures, send it out to the eight school committee members, and Mr. Espinola could be, um, in Drakeet, I could be in Lowell, and we could sign at the exact same time. And then it pulls back to a, the central server, and then you have access to look at that, we do, because we've signed it. And then we could see that each other had signed, or one of, once all the members signed. So I, I have a software I use, if the superintendent wants to contact me about it, I can show it to him. It's a very easy thing, and I, I think the cost is, uh, thirty dollars a month, or I think it might even be free for some of the- But thirty dollars a month would be well worth it for, you know, different documents that need to be signed in a, uh-
So you're saying avoiding signing the warrants at a meeting?
You could. You could sign them quicker. Instead of, um, July, when we don't have a meeting, and you need to get warrants signed, you could sign them at your leisure.
Well, if a member's gonna be absent, or-
Member's gonna be absent, you could sign, you can read it first, and then you say, sign. Um, it's-
I'm all for that.
I've had, uh, people that have been, all ages have used this software and, and find it very easy to see what they're signing.
Go ahead, Mr. O'Hair.
Yeah, just, uh, I have no problem with that, but I would like it also to be available, uh, for handwritten signatures, et cetera. And only because in many, many cases, people's computers are down, uh, you're having some problems. Uh, this way, it's, you're still using the, the process you're talking about, but you're also, uh, it is in the business office, wherever these, uh, excuse me, gentlemen? Okay, wherever-
Yeah, one meeting, please.
Wherever, uh, the, the, uh, uh, documents are going to be, they could be signed there also. It's just a, a backup, you know, for those that, uh, don't have a working computer.
This would be a supplement. You wouldn't have to sign it digitally. You could sign it and then just scan it back in for the other members if you, you wanted, so. You could have both.
Good on them.
Next meeting.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Booton?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare?
Yes.
Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
The chairman made the motion. Yeah.
He made the motion, I'll second the motion.
Something going on. I know.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Lemay?
Yes.
Mr. Tatsias?
Yes.
Mr. Giggie?
Yes.
Mr. O'Hare? Mr. Espinola?
Yes.
Mr. Moran?
Yes.
When did that happen? Smooth sailing, Mr. Superintendent.